Good evening, this is the regular school board meeting for the Duluth Public Schools, Tuesday, October 16th, 2012. May I please have the roll call?
Thank you Chair Wasson. Member Cameron is absent. Member Johnston?
Here.
Member Casper?
Here.
Member Murnicki?
Here.
I am here. Chair Wasson?
Here.
Member Westholm?
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hanson?
Here.
Secretary Melinda Tebow?
Here.
And student representatives are excused. We have a quorum. Chair Wasson?
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to move to the approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Soligapunko. Do I have a second? Seconded by Member Casper. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries six zero. We're moving on to the reading and approving of the minutes from the regular school board meeting of September 18th, 2012. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the regular school board meeting of September 18th, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries six zero. Was that the special one? That was a regular. We're moving on to the special school board meeting of September 18th, 2012. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any discussion on the special school board meeting of September 18th? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries six zero. Moving on to the special school board meeting of October 8th, 2012. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Casper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Westholm. Any discussion on the October special, October 8th special school board meeting? Seeing no lights on, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries six zero. Thank you, Member Murnicki. We're moving on to the audience, and I will remind people who are speaking to be civil. They will have three minutes, and Members Soligapunko will turn on the monitor, and it will light up when you have 30 seconds left, and I will remind you as well when three minutes come if you run over. So our first speaker tonight is Jeff Priddy.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Priddy. I am the new Acting Director of Professional Development and Research at the Purpitch Center for the Arts. I came up this afternoon to chat with your arts faculty to discuss the grant that we have with the Duluth School District, which I'm sure you're aware of. They are on their second year of the grant. They are working with about $75,000 this year of the $135,000 that they were granted. I'm working with them right now to start looking at next year, and letting them know that we're in legislative session right now, and that we're looking at new funding, and what that might entail for the Duluth School District. I also wanted to come up because putting a face to the Purpitch people, and that often helps so that you know who we are, and that we're very pleased to work with Duluth as that North Star group for the arts up in this area. So we really are very pleased with what's happened so far. We hope that that partnership continues, and that I want to assure you that if you ever have questions, feel free to contact me. I can answer the majority of the questions dealing with the arts, dealing with the standards, dealing with a whole variety of those things. So we are looking forward to this next year, working on what we'll be doing in the future. So I appreciate, and also I will be back next month to talk with the Education Committee, and to also answer any questions they might have that Purpitch might be able to do for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. That is true. It's nice to have a face with an organization, so thank you for coming up. We'll see you next month. Our next speaker is Lauren Martell.
Good evening. Last meeting this board rang the bell on a million dollars of change orders in eight months without a single question from the six controlling members. Quite a feat. Those same six members also once again displayed a fine example of representative government by not raising a single concern when it was revealed that administration undercut their authority by giving the go-ahead to complete the foundation work for an ad alternate the board hadn't even approved yet. It's become a tradition in this room that the superintendent, an unelected official, sits in the middle of everything and runs the show. Go ahead and build a foundation. This board won't care. In one way, I don't blame the superintendent. All he wants to do is bury the red plan fast and deep and throw as much whitewash on it as he can. The way most of the public feels about this huge boondoggle, I'd want to get rid of it too. But then why even bother having a board? Why not just put a rubber stamping machine up there? Johnson Controls and Administration can just put their paperwork together, walk up there, rubber stamp it themselves anytime they want. There would be absolutely no difference in the way business is currently being conducted in this room, none. The public's interests could not be represented any more poorly. And of course, the former athletic director, like the former swimming coach, loves the swimming pools. Was anyone surprised? The former A.D. has a right to his opinion, like anyone else, but I do remind him that he's an at-large board member and is supposed to represent this entire city. And if he wants another viewpoint on those pools, I suggest he ride, drive down to the superintendent's old neighborhood in Morgan Park. The people in Morgan Park are mourning the loss of their pool. The people in Morgan Park are worried sick about what's going to happen to their beautiful neighborhood now that they've lost their school. And many of those people see this board as a bunch of latte-sipping, East End elitists who got what they wanted and could care less. Now, you might object to that characterization as being unfair, but it remains reality. That is the perception of many people in Duluth towards this board, and so far, the former A.D. and his ruling allies have utterly failed to change it. Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers, Mr. Murnicki?
No.
Okay. We are now moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent?
Thank you. There are no communications this month, so I will go right into my report. First off, I'll start off by congratulating the United Way, who we've been working with very closely to build community involvement in the schools. And yesterday, they were recognized at the White House for their work with us and as well, our work with them, and so I'm excited to see Paula and Emily as they return and to tell us all about it. I also have some news about the board meetings. For those of you who can't get enough of board meetings, you can now go to YouTube and look up Duluth Public Schools Board Meetings, and you will be able to view the school board meetings on YouTube. They won't be live, but once they're recorded and uploaded, they will be there for the public to see. I would also like to recognize our principals tonight, this being Principal's Month, as declared by the governor, and he made a proclamation, and I just want to read a couple of his whereas statements on the proclamation, because I think that it really speaks to the hard work that our principals do and all of the different roles they take on. So, without further ado, whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort, and whereas the principals are often expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and the guardians of various policy initiatives, while at the same time being entrusted with our young people, our most valuable resource, and whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, mission statements, and performance goals and objectives. And there's a few more whereases, but I won't read the whole thing. Now, therefore, I, Mark Dayton, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2012 as Principal's Month. So thank you, principals, for all that you do. And that is it.
Thank you, Superintendent. And yes, our principals are a very important part of every day. We're now moving on to the standing committee reports, and I'd like to start with the Education Committee Report, please.
This is the Education Committee Report for October 2012. Mr. Lake, our Climate Control Coordinator, shared some of the district's efforts to address our bullying issues in our schools, and they have put together, or he has put together, a matrix that's quite interesting to follow, and I look forward to seeing positive results from that as we move forward with that. Along with our action items, we don't have any presentations requiring approval, no acceptance of grant awards for the school districts. We did have a field trip for the fifth graders at Stowe, who traveled to Woolfridge on September 24th through the 26th. Hopefully, they had better weather than when my sons went there years ago. We also had some discussion on access to our Internet student data, and a joint curriculum review agreement for advanced standing between the Wisconsin Indian Head Technical College and the Duluth Public Schools. We are recommending that that is, that that above agreement between WITC and the Duluth Public Schools is accepted and approved. We did award three diplomas, one to Samuel Fuller, another to Travis Danoski, and another to Andrew Tout. So I move the remainder, or move the entire Education Committee Report for October for board approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Member Casper, seconded by Member Murnicki. Any items to discuss? Member Johnston?
One A, one?
One? A1? Anything else? Member Johnston?
Sure, I'd just like to thank Mr. Lake and Carol Deverney from the Duluth Bully Free Campaign. Just wanted to thank them. Incidentally, October is Bully Prevention Month, and that's one reason that they have that on there, and Carol is from a local Duluth group that is trying to bring awareness of that, and I thought it was well-received, and want to thank Mr. Lake and Carol when I see her for that presentation. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights on, all those in favor of the Education Committee Report, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries six zero. Moving on to the Human Resources Committee Report, Member Westholm.
Yes, there are a number of items under the staff report as usual, action items, and I will go through those shortly, but we also have two things to discuss, and we'll discuss that after the action item discussion, and that's a new position for interim manager of technology and a new position for senior manager of human resources. But first, to the staffing report, action items, and if you look at your list, I'll just briefly read through what they are, and under certified appointments, we have 14, one certified extension, four certified leaves, one certified long-term sub, two certified permanent increases, 12 certified recalls from layoffs, and that's always good to see that, one certified resignation, two certified temporary decreases, 15 certified temporary increases, two non-certified appointments, one non-certified demotion, one non-certified extension, five non-certified leaves, one non-certified long-term substitute, two non-certified permanent decrease, five non-certified permanent increase, seven non-certified promotions, one non-certified recall, seven non-certified resignations, one non-certified retirement, one non-certified suspension, and one non-certified temporary increase. And that's the action, or excuse me, the staffing report for this month. Anything to add to any of those? No? Any questions?
Member Johnston?
I'd just like to withhold 2A and B.
2A and B? Member Casper?
Tim, could you update us in the community as far as certified recall from layoffs? Where we're at now as far as staff that was laid off as part of our process, and now how many employees we currently have certified and non-certified that are in a layoff status, and what that total FTE is in each of those areas?
I can speak on the certified side. On a total full-time equivalent, I think last year, I didn't bring the numbers with me, I did speak to it at the committee meeting, but the, we had about 14-point-something of full-time equivalents laid off. Up to this date, we've brought 12-point-something full-time equivalents back. So, you know, there was a, even with that number that I'm reporting, we have a few people that, in the meantime, while they're laid off, did find another position that they, they will remain on layoff, but are eligible to come back next year. They can remain on layoff up to four years. One of the reasons we do allow that too is if the time to recall them falls really close to the start of the school year, they do have the option of remaining on layoff. If it was prior to that date and we recall them and they turn it down, then they can forfeit their position, but we will be in a position where eventually, as retirements kick in, we do want to keep good teachers on hand.
So in essence, we are very, very close, so 14.5, 12 points, so in essence, we're within a couple of FTEs of all of our staff that we had to go through, or close to all of our staff that we had to go through this layoff process with, are now back working for us in some capacity.
Yeah, those are full-time equivalents, and they represent, there's more bodies, for instance, that 14-point-whatever on the layoffs represented 21 people at that time with either portions or all of their positions laid off. So we are very close, but that is only, the numbers I'm reporting are the tenured. So there were some non-tenured teachers that, of that non-tenured group, I believe there were about nine non-tenured teachers that were non-renewed, and of that group, I believe, four have returned, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd just make some comments too, I think I'd fit in here. Last night, I attended the Denfeld Advisory Committee. One of the items that we had on that was class sizes, and I think we should at least kind of bring it up, so I'll kind of fit it in here. And of course, everybody knows there was, had some news on it and impacting our students and of course, our classes. Principal Skoniers talked a lot about, because that was happening to be featured, was Denfeld, the impact that that's had on Denfeld, and it's pretty substantial, and that's based on the budget deficit that, action that we did as a board. Again, just want to make that awareness there that there's a lot of talk out there in the community. I think it came in after we had our committee meeting, but it's certainly something I know Superintendent Gronseth and I have talked about, as everybody has, but just wanted to mention it and those impacts that we had, even though we've brought some people back, many positions happened, came back, and it's difficult.
Member Johnston, we will go on to item 2A, if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah, I wanted to talk about those items. On my email today, I did see a note from Mr. Hanson on the Human Resource Senior Manager thing, but I did not see anything at all on the manager of technology. Tell opened up this green folder here. What was on there?
Yep. It was in the agenda, and you received information today and a hard copy tonight, so you did, it was there and it is on the agenda.
Well, then I will go on and say that apparently, again, we had a committee meeting. These weren't brought up at the committee meetings.
They were, Member Johnston? Yeah, they were brought up. They were there. Do you have anything further, Member Johnston? I'll just.
Oh, yeah, I will, because again, looking at this, we must not have opened very much detail, must have went awfully quick, but again, looking at the one that appears to be a 15% increase on the human resource position, and I certainly have no problem, the person certainly deserves that. When we're at a position here where we are looking at contracts in the future, seems like we're giving the wrong impression here to the public here when we're giving one person quite a substantial increase. Again, he certainly deserves that, and the position may very well warrant that, but it does, I think, put us in a difficult position, in an awkward position, which may be misconstrued by the public. I think the board should really reconsider this and table this until we can, until, at least till next month, and as we, and I'll make a motion to table these two items.
Is there a second for the motion to table both positions? Is there a second to the motion to table both positions? Seeing none, that is, that fails. We will move on from that now to Member Westholm. You, let's go ahead and take each of the positions separately for a vote, please.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe just say aye.
Okay. So I will move the first one, 2A, the new position for interim manager of technology.
Is there a second? Seconded by Members Soligapunko. Any more discussion on that? Member Johnston?
Yes, since the motion is on the floor, just want to reiterate again that I'll be voting against this, not because the person doesn't deserve this, but I think it's going to be misconstrued by the public. We have large class sizes and everything else, yet we're giving management quite a substantial increase here, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Mr. Gronseth?
This particular position, this manager of technology, is actually, we had an employee who changed positions. He went back to the classroom, the director that was in this position, so this is actually a manager position instead of a director position as we kind of restructure that technology. So this is a decrease in cost in that department.
Okay, so this one, because I know the human resource, when I looked at that at home, and that was a 15% increase, so this one does not equate to that. The technology one?
Superintendent?
It's a different position.
Yeah.
So it's less, yeah. It's more for the individual that's taking this position, but it's, because we're restructuring the technology department, it's less than we are paying for a director.
Any more discussion on the position? All those in favor of accepting the interim manager of technology position, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries 5-1. And then we'll do the same with the senior manager of the human resources.
I'll move the senior manager of human resources position, which again, is a new position.
Thank you. Second. Moved by Member Westholm, seconded by Members Soligapunko. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
It's just a quick repeat. This one is a 15% increase in the current wages, at least that's what I figured out this afternoon, looking at it. And again, I think that's not a good thing to be sending to people at this point in our district.
Superintendent?
I just want to recognize that this is a new position that's being created, and the person who's taking it is also taking on extra duties and more responsibilities, and so the pay differential is in recognition of the extra duties that are being taken on.
Thank you for that, Superintendent. As I went through that, I realized many of those things were new, and I appreciate the person staying with us and being committed to ISD 709. All those in favor of this position, the senior manager of human resources, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries 5-1. And now, Member Westholm, if you'd like to remove the rest of the committee report, please.
Yeah, and as I mentioned before, there are no informational items at this time. There are no HR future items at this time, so I will move the HR committee report for October 16th.
Thank you. Seconded by Member Murnicki. All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries 6-0. And we'll move on to the Business Committee Report, please. Members Soligapunko.
Okay. Okay. This is the Business Committee Report for Tuesday, October 16th. Let's see, we have the regular financial report, bids, there are no bids, RFPs, there is one administrative services-only dental services, and it's recommended that proposal for Delta Dent will be accepted with an ASO fee that remains the same at $255 per eligible employee per month with a three-year guarantee. The contract will be effective January 1st, 2013, through December 31st, 2015. And then there are no quotes. We have number three policies, suspension for policy 3136, travel in district, in-state and out-of-state, and administration is requesting the suspension of the policy, to approve the suspension of travel in district, in-state, and out-of-state. And number four, contracts. A1, Marleus Johnson Head Start Mental Health Consultant. Recommendation is Duluth School Board to approve the contract with Marleus Johnson for mental health consultant services for the Head Start program in the amount of $36,000. And change orders for the following schools, the Eastern Middle School, Lincoln Park Middle School, Myers Wilkins Elementary, Laura MacArthur Elementary, East High School, and you see all those board members. And then resolutions, we just have one resolution, board members, if you would turn to page 65, and we'll take that, and it's just, everyone has it, resolution authorizing student activity, bank account signers, we just have a few changes with administration. So I move Resolution B 10-12-30, dated October 16th, 2012.
Thank you. Second? Member Casper?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries 6-0.
Okay, and moving on, let's see, we just have informational items, the usual expenditure contracts, revenue contracts, facilities management report. contracts, revenue contracts, facilities management report, long-range facilities plan status report, any change orders, contracts, and all that, and then future items, fiscal year twelve financial audit, which I know is happening. So, I move the rest of the Business Committee Report to Chair Watson.
Thank you. Is there a second? Member Casper?
Second.
Seconded by Member Casper. Any items to be held or talked about? Member Johnston?
Four B one, four B two, six E and six F.
Six E and six F. Any other items, members of the board? Member Johnston, you can begin with four B one.
Sure. I brought this up, I want to reiterate again, my concerns, these change orders are for Eastern Middle School, and if I understand our discussion right last week, that these are already done. These were done quite a while ago. And again, I caution the board that I think that, again, this is a violation of our policy. Of course, we can say that, oh, we don't follow our policy, but I think that's a cavalier approach, that is not the way to do business, particularly when it comes to contract orders. Some of these are not too big, normally I wouldn't say, but this has been going on now for two months in a row, and I think that it's really inappropriate, the way to do business, by doing things and coming after the fact for the board to ask for approval. That's not the way we should be doing business, not the way our policy says this, not the way anybody else runs contracts. And I'm very concerned about that, and of course, I'm asking the board to not approve these. And of course, you could say, what good does it do because they're already built? That's the whole point.
Member Johnston, are you done with that item?
I'm done with four B one.
Okay, I'm going to say that at the committee meeting, it was explained to us about these and how it happened, it does not go against our policy quite clearly, that was explained to us by Mr. Leiter. So, your interpretation is far different than what mine was and what we discussed at the, at the committee meeting. You can move on to item B two, four B two.
First of all, I would just recommend anybody read our policy. I would ask how many of this board have ever read our policy, policies, but again, if you read those, you'll find out that they, they're not being followed. Again, Lincoln Park Middle School, this is for an eighty-eight thousand dollar thing, a more substantial one, and I believe, maybe Mr. Leiter, this is done as well already, and this is already installed, is that correct?
Member Johnston, members of the board, as indicated at the Business Committee Meeting, in, in regards to the board policy, the board has passed resolutions which provide exception to the policy and direction to administration that has been the practice for going on to five years now related to the long-range facilities plan relative to change orders. And yes, to answer the specific question, the change orders listed in four A to have been completed.
Again, that's to me totally, totally, almost unimaginable, being a contract officer's representative for the federal government that's worked on many contracts. When I find out that things come to us, particularly in the eighty thousand dollar price range, not to mention more, it is absolutely unbelievable. And maybe I was a little bit slow to not pick this up a couple of years ago, but I realize now that this has been going on, it's going on wrong. I would also like to say about this particular item, we had a discussion on this, and I will say again, these items should not even be change orders, these items should have been included in the contract, they should have been part of the original contract, you shouldn't have even been, come up to us, asked us to change them. To change the light fixtures, to put in kill switches on boilers, that's all code, this should never, ever came up to us, this should have been included.
Member Casper?
If I recall, Mr. Leiter explained how some of those things happened, and we were, because there was some design errors during the architectural design of some of those things, we were not credited for it, but we weren't charged for those, so when it came time to pay for them, there was a, and you can probably explain that better for us, Carrie, or for the public that are listening, how that sort of happened with some of those issues, but I recall a conversation about it, so. Thank you, Member Casper, members of the board. I guess I, it may sound totally contrary to Member Johnston's opinion, but I, I believe that the typical change order that we are dealing with in large, multi-million dollar construction projects, in this case, Lincoln Park Middle School, with a fifty million dollar budget, considering the, the total percentage of change here and the detail that goes into a construction of a building like that, there are going to be architectural omissions that in order to complete the construction properly, they are going to have to be corrected. The architects in those cases complete the required design work and effort to get a proposal from the contractor to add additional value and work to the construction of the project, value that we would have paid for had it not been omitted from the original drawings, and that allows the project to be completed. We do pay for that additional value when it's added in the form of a change order, and those are typical in the manner that they're being presented to you for your approval. Where they can be, the board would be asked to provide regular action on these before they happen, in order to maintain the construction schedule and the progress of the project as it's been approved by the school board. There are decisions that are made on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis, where it's a monthly basis, those are the type that we can bring to the school board. Where it happens on a daily and weekly basis, your administrators in these areas have been instructed, I believe, by the school board, to take necessary action to complete the project consistent with what the board has approved, and that is what I've been doing routinely as we proceed with these projects. If the board is looking for a change in that direction and wants to meet on the frequency to act specifically on each one of these, I, I'm willing to meet and share that information with the board for their action. I don't believe that's what you're asking, so, long explanation, but I think it's been a conversation that has taken place over the last four or five months, and I just want to make sure that I'm doing what the board is asking of me.
Rest assured, Mr. Leiter, that this conversation has happened more than just the last four months, and I think it's an interpretation of a board member that, I, the majority of us understand what we have indicated to you as a board, how we wanted to proceed with these change orders, and I appreciate that, and you are acting within the, the, what is it, the five percent? So, anyway, it's, it's an interpretation of the view. Member Casper, did that help? All right, thank you. Member Johnston, moving on to item six E.
Sure, just to, one quick comment back on that. I read these resolutions that has been referred to, I don't read that, that has been referenced to, and even if the board did approve it, you don't go through and violate our own policy. The other items that I would bring up would, I think are, was what, six E?
Six E, yes.
Want to say, in this case, so thank you for Mr. Leiter, sending us not bait on the Congdon project, that was much appreciated, you know, progress that was going on, and Mr. Leiter and I have talked about this, and I want to thank him again, that, I wish this would have happened on other projects, we could have sometimes avoided some of these questions like on change orders, but I do thank Mr. Leiter and Mr. Gronseth about getting that out to us, I really does, do think it helps a lot to avoid some of the misunderstanding that we've just talked about.
Going on to six F, Member Johnston?
Yeah, this is, again, just the long-range facility plan, again, want to also thank Mr. Leiter, he did send out what I've been asking about, an update on change orders, and I do appreciate that, and also thank you for that. It does bring up questions, and I don't, I don't have the exact paper, you came, I just want to make a quick comment on it, that the change orders appear to be somewhere, change orders in the contracts appear to be somewhere around the two hundred and twenty thousand, probably somewhere in there. That's going to go up slightly as we finish Myers Wilkins and Congdon, and I know that. One of the things that I've already talked both about is, or Mr. Leiter and Mr. Gronseth as well, is that everybody has to remember here, we, it looks like we're going to have somewhere about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on contracts. Again, reminding the board that the red plan costs three hundred and fifteen million. That's, we still are having somewhere around the ninety, not ninety thousand, not nine hundred thousand, but ninety million dollars that I'm still asking for where that went. And I will be continuing to ask that, to find out where that is. And I'll leave that one at that. I did want to bring up the question, one of the student reps was here at the Business Committee Meeting, I want to thank her, unfortunately, she's not here, Ariel Pendleton, she's also happens to be the homecoming queen for Denfeld, which is really cool, because she brought up some concerns, and this is what I ask again, we've brought up some concerns in the past about Denfeld too, and, and I was going to ask, again, I don't think, you know, I, do I understand correctly that some of the ventilation in some of the science rooms was corrected? Again, update me if you could, Mr. Leiter, on that situation.
And Member Johnston, members of the board, there was action taken this summer to make some modifications to the science room ventilation. I, I did respond to Principal Scogner's and the science room staff, I, I can't recall, but I thought I copied the school board relative to that, since you were copied on the initial, apologize if I didn't, but the answer is yes.
Thank you, again. I don't know if I did get that, but, but anyway, thanks for working on that, and some of the other items there at Denfeld, I want to thank you for that.
Member Casper?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for Member Johnston, if he was unaware of it, that about six, almost sixty thousand dollars of that change order for last month was because of the, the design issues regarding the track at the New East High School, and we were compensated for that through the Architects Insurance Company, so it, it looks like it's a cost to us, but we were actually compensated for that as part of the design error that went into the construction of that track, so.
Thank you, Member Casper. Member Murnicki?
Hi, Carrie, being a Denfeld grad, it's a very important school still to me, we were talking last week about bike racks, and I was wondering, I asked you about if there's, there's, if there are any bike racks at some of the old schools, or if there's any information on providing a bike rack at a Denfeld.
Member Murnicki, members of the board, I believe that there was a bike rack at Denfeld on the opposite side of the building where they want them, and that was going to be moved. I haven't heard that that's not adequate to, to meet their needs. If it's not, I can certainly have folks look further to see if we have any extra, and I may not be aware of all of the action that has been taken in that regard.
I, I remember we had a bike rack up on Sixth Street, on the Sixth Street entrance, and I was just wondering, what you just said, is it adequate? Of course, that was a hundred and ten years ago, too, when I went to school, so that's where we had the bike rack at one time.
Mr. Hanson?
I just wanted to confirm part of what Mr. Leiter is saying, that there was one bike rack in the front, on the front side of the building, and there was an additional one in the back, we did have that moved around within a couple of days after our committee meeting that that was brought up at, and I've not heard any additional comments since that was done, so I think our assumption at this point is that the two bike racks together now in the front of the building are satisfactory.
Thank you for telling us that. Member Casper?
I also want to briefly comment on that, having visited numerous schools in the last month, particular Leicester Park Elementary, when I was out there just a few weeks ago, their bike racks that were there, they were probably fifty, forty to fifty bikes with kids that were riding them to school, and it was really great to see that, and to see that we're now encouraging that. I know it wasn't that long ago that really the, the school's were discouraging parents from allowing their kids to ride to school, and it's great now to see that we have bike racks that are accessible and provided for our kids that are choosing that mode of transportation. So, I was encouraged to see that, encouraged to see how many kids are actually doing that, so, thank you.
Thank you, board members. We have a motion and a second by Member Casper for the remainder of the committee report. All those in favor of the Business Committee Report, please say aye. Aye opposed? That carries five to one. We have no special resolutions this evening, we have no questions, anyone's lights. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.